Thank you for joining us this evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, July 26th, at 7:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief. Thank you for, we've got a couple of folks in audience, and I don't know who we have on Zoom. Looks like about seven folks. I just again want to say thank you for everyone and all the hard work that was put into graduations, stepping up ceremonies, all the great end of year ceremonies. The weather was with us. It was a great week and a great graduation. Congratulations to the 2022 graduates. They're all on their way to their summer plans and their summer jobs. And so we wish them all well and thank you to the high school staff and the district and the facility staff for a job well done in bringing the school year to an end. Again, a lot of ups and downs and ins and outs throughout the school year. But again, what we accomplished was incredible with the help of the Board, the administration, the students and the parents. We continue to deliver on our goal of providing an incredible education to our students. So, thank you, everyone. I wish everyone some peace and downtime, or as I said in my speech, a little pause over the summer to relax. So with that, Michelle, I will move over to public comment.
Good evening. For participants in person, please wait for the chairperson to acknowledge and call each participant to the mic. For participants via Zoom, please click the raise hand option. All participants, please state your name and address for the record log. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Anyone in person?
Anyone in person? Okay, we'll move to Zoom.
Ms. Stacy Ta. You are unmuted and recognized.
Stacy Ta, 10 clocks lane. I noticed that open choice was not on the master agenda provided in the packet tonight. I just would like to provide a reminder that when Board members McCammon, Membroni, and Seeny voted against open choice this past winter, they said they would like the Board to revisit this topic. So I hope to see one of them add open choice to the master agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
No more raised hands.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. And just to reiterate, the Board Chair said, thank you to everyone for pulling off an absolutely beautiful graduation ceremony. And everybody who's responsible from administration to support staff for doing that, and the parents also. I have to say it, but I thought it was, the kids were tremendous. Dignified, classy. It just was a beautiful way to end a very challenging year. And congratulations to the class of 2022. Summer school's up and running. Mrs. Klein has been busy the last two days. The numbers will probably settle down over the week, but so far, so good for the opening of summer school in E S Y. Ox Ridge transition is underway. I think Abatement is today. And the moving in has already boxes and so on and so forth have been moved over. So that's nice. And we'll have an update on the H R Committee and those, because those processes are also working forward. The P N Z public hearing for the stadium lights is scheduled for July 12th. Our attorney will be present. I obviously will be present if any Board member would like to attend. It's on July 12th. The administration, we have completed our regulations for the use of the lights. I'll forward those to the Board. Hiren, we are okay, except we have some openings in administration and some of the support services areas where we're looking for specialized support services. So that's the main summary. Mr. Monrad Kevin has taken over from Mike Lynch, Mike transitioned this past week. And Kevin has started his job, so it's, and to think of it right away. The mental health resources on the website have been updated for any resources for parents, along with all of the workshops that was recently conducted at the elementary, middle, and high school. We are meeting, we have a meeting, I believe, next week with high school staff, administration, some of the clinicians and experts along the way that you are familiar with and have heard just about how we move forward into the next phase of this. And clearly, we're continuing to work with the community and the town on this also. So Minister of Retreat was last, this past two days, or two days last week, and focuses on Connecticut Seab, which is the new special education process for P P Ts. We went to the C E S workspace in Bethel, which was absolutely terrific, actually. I don't know if you know that space, but it is as it describes a workspace. There's different things, dance, technology, culinary arts, woodworking, I'm using the wrong term, but more contemporary term now. But lots of spaces, maker spaces type thing for entrepreneurship and so on and so forth. It was a great two days. We had team building, again, Connecticut Seab strategic planning. We focused on the power of moments by the Hughes Brothers. I'll be happy to actually give people a book about that. If you'd like to read it, we have some spares. And we focused on making special moments for people who've come into the organization, particularly for our new people and also for our students when they're re-entering the school year, the start of the year. So that was a particularly helpful retreat this year. The Board Retreat is on the 13th. We have a draft. We'll share that where the Board Chair feels that's appropriate in terms of getting feedback as to what you would like to see in there. But Tom Binney is secured, particularly for Board responsibilities, legal updates as it pertains to any legislation or recent developments in the news also. And he'll also talk about some aspects of student discipline. So he will be there in the morning. Kay Bismuth is in the morning also. So you can hopefully look at the schedules, see if you think, any feedback, you should certainly go through the Board Chair for that. And I want to thank the parents then for all the celebrations and recognitions, things that they did for particularly our students, also our staff, but particularly our students down the stretch. It just was phenomenal. And I wish all our families primarily a safe and rejuvenating summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting held on June 14th, 2022? Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Seeny. All those in favor? That is unanimous with everyone here. Thank you. Move on to Board Committee reports. Oh, okay. Sorry, John. I missed you, John. Go ahead. You're on vacation, I understand.
It's okay not to have any, John. You're okay.
This is a little bit strange of a circumstance because there's a lot of noise around me. So I'm hopeful that you all can hear me.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, cool. So given that the school year just ended, there's not a tremendous number of things to report on from the student perspective. But I just wanted to reiterate that the end of year went extraordinarily well. Graduation went, graduation was great. There were a lot of festivities and parties surrounding that. The band course and the orchestra gave tremendous performances, as well as some students who were present, notably, I believe, Nikki Condon and Stephen Cerosi, and also Giselle Weiniger, Cosmo Matruda, people like that. They gave tremendous performances, and we were really grateful to have some students be able to kind of liven up the activities surrounding that tremendous occasion. And to end this, really, this is really a very short report today. I know that many students are excited to return to school next year, knowing that some helpful changes and some really needed changes were made to the level of stress at school and in terms of the mental health resources that will be available in the future. So I know that a lot of people are very hopeful that some positive changes will be made. With that, I have to leave, unfortunately. I really would love to be with you all, but I'm unfortunately away. So I would like to wish you all a lovely summer. I'll see you all.
Yep, appreciate you taking time on your vacation. Go enjoy your vacation and have some downtime.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to Board Committee reports. Mr. Seeny.
Basically, almost two weeks ago, we had a finance committee meeting, and the finance committee recommended a transfer. It's a very small transfer.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mrs. McCammon?
The H H R Committee, we'll be meeting again next Wednesday. We are working hard on coming up with a conceptual design now that we have all of our people in place, our architect, our construction manager, et cetera.
I will say, like Ox Ridge, I think Dr. Adley gave an update on Ox Ridge. We're in Abatement. We're in demo, and we're in move-in mode. And things are pretty exciting up there in the spray paint and graffiti art that was allowed to be done on the school building, I think, thanks to Katie and company. Just incredible that the students had fun and the students got to sign a beam that will go up in part of the new structure too. So thank you for that. And I know from tuning in and tuning out, but H H R is, a lot of time and energy is being put in on that with an incredible group of people. It's that phase of finding, you know, the architect, construction, and now design phase. So it's a lot of work, but thank you to that committee. Mrs. Akman?
Just a quick announcement that there's a policy committee meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30 as we continue our policy audit.
Great, thank you. Good. All right. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Further discussion and possible action on proposed dates and times for high school professional learning communities. Dr. Adley?
Nothing has changed from this, and I haven't heard anything. So it sits as recommended.
Okay. Any Board questions or comments on those dates? I think we've had some good discussions around them. May I have a motion to approve the proposed dates and times for high school professional learning communities for the 2022-2023 school year as presented? Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Akman. All those in favor? Good, thank you. Report on the D A E G Barbara Harrington Fund Awards. Mr. Tranberg, who is not here this evening?
So you have the memorandum in front of you. This is an honor for Barbara Harrington. This is an ongoing donation. And if it's approved by the Board, it will show up. And it's not on the donation sheet for tonight, and a different agenda item. But if it's approved by the Board, then it would be. So this supports advanced studies, workshops, conferences, that enrich the ability of teachers to provide high-quality instruction, both to our gifted students and to all students. So as long as it falls in that category, they may pursue other topics to study. But as long as they focus on a high-quality learning for any student per se.
Great. So thank you for the memo. Thank you to the Barbara Harrington Fund. This goes back to 1984. And I know my time on the Board has really given teachers and folks in the district a neat opportunity to do something, do some things over the summer. Any questions or thoughts? All right. So anything we need here, Dr. Adley? No? Okay, good. We'll move on to the annual progress report on 2021-2022 goals and objectives.
So this completes the report on the Board Goals. I'm not going to go through all of this, but I'll just hit the highlights. Yes, we did. We, I think we can be proud of the way the Board has supported and the community has supported the return to school plan. The plan was updated for 6/23, which is recently. And that's required by the Connecticut State Department of Education. So we have completed everything that we needed to complete. I did look at the measures and looked, is there anything there that we have not done? And there really isn't anything there that we have not done at this particular point. So that's a summary for that.
You know, while you're on that, the one, we saved district. Is there any conversation with your meetings with the state on them looking for a return to school plan for this coming fall?
Yes, they're having a summit with the Department of Public Health. And I said, stay tuned. I'm elected to know what comes out of our August summit.
Oh, nothing like giving us some time to organize ourselves, right?
The teaching and learning, I'll just point to one, they completed the study for the math acceleration from the gifted recommendation, and that will be coming through. I will say there's something that we haven't gotten to just there was the ongoing develop, well, I'll say it's ongoing, but we haven't fully developed the vision of the graduate measurement tools. The district's strategic plan. I think we have, we have been given updates along the way in that. So I think the Board knows kind of where we stand on that and the progress we've made. Elementary school projects, well, I just think we've done a phenomenal job, the Board, the leadership.
The most important update you have on there that we submitted to the state.
That is correct. Yep, we made the deadline. So it's just exciting to see there was come the fruition. And I'm particularly excited that they're all being done at one time. That's challenging, but it's.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, yes. But it's just exciting to see these.
Congrats on getting that submission. It's, yeah, it's not easy.
Yep, and the final measurement that will be, if it's approved by the state, and hopefully that is the case, a policy audit, we've been doing, we've been well on our way on doing that. Board agendas align to Board policies. We just haven't got there just yet with that. That's, that's another step in the process. If we want to do that, we identified to do that. We haven't just been able to do that, pull that off just yet. But perhaps we can do that, revisit that. District Communications, I'm not going to cover anything that we have done there. We're still working on communication. This is ongoing. I think we also recognize that we probably have to revisit as a Board the Communication Subcommittee, which is delineated in the Board Retreat as a topic on, not as a separate topic, it's under Communications Committee work. So what, do we want to continue with that committee, or we're going to start the committee, so on and so forth? Engagement in professional development. If I've missed something here in terms of what the Board has done or not done, it's sort of tapered off here at the end of the year. We did have some professional development. Tom came in and talked us about company, sorry, contract bargaining and so on. So I put that down. But if there's anything else, you can let me know. I do, we do have to sort of make sure that we have a C E S representative sitting on that board next year, because I think that's probably an important step to do. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions or others.
What questions or thoughts?
I will say, just moving forward, we're going to have, I think we're going to have a discussion about the structure of Board Goals. We've had that discussion before. So at the Board Retreat, I don't want to just dump down goals. You can sort of like talk about how you want the structured versus the strategic plan. So, great. So that we, when I do bring something back, it's sort of palatable to, and inform you would like.
Is there a specific reason you're pointing to that right now?
Well, just because we're talking about Board Goals.
Yeah.
So we're going to kick off at the start of the year. The Board Retreat typically is where we sort of, typically I bring some there, or at least that's been my practice. But if, how did Board Goals differ from strategic plan? And how would the Board like it to differ from strategic plan? Or to be infused with it or otherwise? It's just a format or format and content?
Historically, the goals that you brought, who was the agent that carried out those goals?
I think in the past, a lot of it has been administration who have been charged with doing it. So this year, we have quite a few goals and have ownership. So I think it'll be probably a malformation between the two. I think that's probably a healthy thing. But that's one of the questions, like, are they ours in a sense of Board? And what does that mean? And how do we execute on those? So. Mrs. Akman, okay?
I'm good.
The, you have a strategic plan in the last script as well. How did you delineate between the two?
Essentially, it was important, the strategic plan, there may have been a few others out there by budget or otherwise, that there's sometimes there's unique things that come out. And then, so they develop one or write that. One of them was like redistricting, just doing a project around redistricting that we need to do, right? So if you had a project like that, or otherwise, if the Board wanted to take on board, whether, I don't know, late start times, or I'm just saying something, or otherwise.
Communications Committee would be one, right? Board Communications Committee could be one.
I agree. I'm just trying to understand, because there might be, for example, things that we talked about last week, potentially updating the strategic plan with, for example, some of the mental health work that we have to do. So it just would be helpful going into that conversation to understand how you're defining what bucket for which.
In the past, I think a lot of the goals that we did sort of delineated within each of like administrations by their department type thing. So it's a question, I was like, how you want to do that? I thought you were, but it happened to show.
Mrs. Akman?
So the Board of Education can be taught, thought of, and is referred to in two different ways. The Board, the nine of us getting together, and the Board, the entity which encompasses the district. So the goals, and we've discussed how to raise level of goals several times, include the district and what the Board expects to see accomplished by the district at the end of the year. And it's sort of a map, right, and an annual map. Then there's a strategic plan, which really stretches out and should be longer and should kind of be the path that you're mapping out, your route. So I think that it is not, we should be careful that what we don't say is what's the goal for the nine of us or the goal for our committees? That can be part of the plan. But the district doesn't exist separately from the entity of the Board of Education in that sense, in terms of annual goals. So.
Well, that is a perfect description of the way, and I actually like to see it work, yes.
Okay.
So we're not on a different page than that.
So we'd ask people to bring their thoughts to the table and any information you need beforehand or anything Dr. Adley can share. And as I said, we sketched out, Jill and Sarah and I have met from an agenda standpoint. So we will get that out to.
Which just as a, maybe useful, just, would you like me to actually suggest goals? Or as part of that, it says Board Goals. Do you want to talk about the development of it? Just like what I was talking, just like John, you're talking, it's the structure of it. And just don't come with proposed goals, but let's talk about the structure and purpose. And would you rather?
Both?
Yeah. I think you absolutely need both, because if you don't have goals by late June, school year starts.
Then we can build them into what's strategic, what's annual, and you know, kind of how. And I think to your point, Jill, too, some of that has to be built into update of the longer-term strategic plan.
Less helpful, thank you.
I mean, it will be an interactive exercise. You'll come with goals. But that doesn't mean that that's, you know, I think we came, after we did our Board self-reflection, we sort of developed some goals from there. So I would expect it to be multi.
Yes.
Multiple inputs.
Good.
I agree with bringing them.
Thank you. All right, good. We'll move on to Mr. Manfredonia. Discussion and possible action on proposed athletic field trips. Chris, there you are.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
So we have here a number of field trips for discussion for next year. Many of these trips will take place with students qualifying based on their performance during the, during the course of their season. The only trips that were definitively a go are the girls' cross-country trip in the fall, and then the two boys' ice hockey trips in the winter. The rest are qualification requirements for our students to participate. These trips are opportunities, really great opportunities for our students to perform and compete against some of the, you know, best competition in Northeast. These trips will follow the Board guidelines in terms of the district paying for any entry fee that's required for these trips. And the families of those participating paying for the hotel, lodging, transportation, and food associated with the trips. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia. So kind of an annual review. And to Mr. Manfredonia's report, a lot of it depends on qualifications with some of the stuff, but other stuff is pretty standard that we participate in over the years. Thoughts, questions, Board? Yes, Mr. Seeny?
Is the number of events pretty consistent with prior years?
It is. It's, everything you see in front of you, you've seen in years past.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to?
Julia's question.
Yep, Julie, Mrs. Best.
I was just curious. I think I noted in a couple of places, it mentioned that fundraising would cover some of the costs, and in other places, it was the families of the athletes. And is there a policy on how we handle that, or is it decided by the team? How does that work?
The only policy we have is that the families that participate would be responsible to pay, whether they choose to fundraise or just, you know, cover the cost themselves up to the individual teams. The district would pay the entry fee, though.
And that's, those are in the budget, right, the entry fees?
Correct. Yep, those are all in the budget.
Thank you.
Good. May I have a motion to approve the proposed athletic field trips for the 22-2023 school year as presented? Mrs. McCammon, second by Mr. Seeny. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone.
Mr. Manfredonia, are you going to talk to us about discussion and possible acceptance of the contemplated gifts from the Blue Wave Booster Club?
I am. Thank you for the introduction. So we are fortunate that the Blue Wave Booster Club has supported our teams in so many ways over the so many years, you know, we've all been working with our student athletes. And this, this fall, they'd like to support the boys' and girls' soccer teams by providing for them a set of sideline parka jackets to be used during the later part of the fall season when the weather turns cold and inclement. They get a full set for the boys' and girls' varsity teams. And we're fortunate that the Booster Club continues to support our teams and our athletes in many ways that they do for those, providing those things that are the nights to have for our programs.
Okay. Answer questions. Mr. Brown? You stole my thunder, but thank you. We'll say it again. There's, there's no reason not to say thank you twice. So thank you for all the work that's done by the Blue Wave Booster Club and for the generosity. Much appreciated. May I have a motion to accept the contemplated gifts from the Blue Wave Booster Club for the girls' and boys' varsity soccer teams? Mrs. Akman, second by Mr. Brown. All those in favor? Good. Thank you, Mr. Manfredonia.
Thank you all so much.
Booster team. Booster club. Mr. Rudel, annual report on donations.
So we have received just over $64,000 in donations this year, excluding what was just approved. So now $74,000. Received $43,000, now $52,000 in athletic donations, just under $10,000 for our music departments, and then just under $11,000 for all seven schools combined. As usual, we thank all our generous donors this year who've supported the school district and all causes.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Mr. Rudel. Thank you to parents. Thank you to all the booster clubs. Why don't you scroll back up, Rich, so I can, or Michelle? Well, thank you to everyone that's on that list. A lot of booster clubs and parents. So incredible donations, supporting a lot of stuff throughout our district. So thank you. Mrs. McCammon?
Was the robotics donation received last year?
It was.
Thank you.
Question.
And that's not multiple years, just one year?
So we'll have another donation for the new fiscal year. So you'll see that in the donation report for the following year.
Thank you.
Good questions or thoughts on donations? Good. Thank you, Mr. Rudel. We'll move on to discussion on May 2021-2022 financial report. Possible action on proposed budget transfers. Mr. Rudel?
So this is financial report through May. We are showing a year at $1,683,320. We're about 64% of our budget. This is pretty much a line report. The general education RC is forecast a positive 118,000. The special education RC is a positive 562,000, with the bulk of that being the excess cost reimbursement. And then the COVID RC is just over $1,700. As shown before, we do have some COVID expenses in the COVID grant, the A R P grant. All in total, $1,085,000. We had transfers totaling $61,208, plus the grant to $1,025,000. Salaries are a positive $56,000. We do have salary savings and turnover of just over 6,000. We get some clubs and councils that aren't running, which is savings over 12,000. We did indicate it at the Finance Committee report, we did see a spike in substitutes at the secondary level. So we have a forecast deficit of $6,600 in substitutes. And then budget control portion that was unused this year at 43,000. Operating is positive 71,000. Legal fees, primarily in special education, trend positive by about 25,000. Various materials, auditing services, travel, P D. And then the COVID supplies are positive 11,000. Special education tuition is a positive 35,000, bringing us to the 71. Fixed is a positive 27,000. It's primarily utilities at 16,000 to the positive. And then we have some savings in workers' compensation, general liability, and student accident insurance. Revenue is a positive to the 527,000. And again, that is primarily due to excess costs. Our reimbursement came in at 80.03% against the budget of 67.5%. We are a little bit of a shortfall in E L P tuition of 39,000. And then field and building rental revenue is a positive 8,500. We do have one transfer for Board consideration. It's really an accounting adjustment, but it does cross broad categories. We have a couple of E L P faculty members who are out on workers' comp. And so the workers' comp reimbursement goes to the workers' compensation line. This is just. Uh, this is just to fund the substitutes who have covered, uh, those absences for employees.
Thank you, Mr. Roodel, questions or comments?
One question.
Sure, Mr. Senior.
Uh, I, I think I asked you at the last meeting or the last board event meeting, given certain supply chain issues or backlog issues, you see any do you have any worries of fulfilling, you know, some purchasing in time in the next fiscal year?
So everything is taking longer, things that would take two weeks are taking four to six weeks, um, but we have really no concerns in terms of a lot, a lot of the equipment that we have to order. We won't have it by the end of July, we'll have it begin of August, um, but still in time for school.
So need, no need to accelerate the purchasing here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. All right, may have a motion to, uh, approve the May twenty-twenty-two budget transfers. Mr. Senior, second by Mrs. Bast, all those in favor? Thank you, thank you, Rich. We will move on to further discussion and possible action on proposed revisions to Board of Education Policy Series five thousand. Students fifty-two, twenty-five drug and alcohol use by students, fifty-two, thirty illegal substances and tobacco policy for student athletes and students participating in extracurricular activities, fifty-two, fifty-five search and seizure. Fifty-two, sixty-five confidentiality and access to education records, fifty-three, twenty-five student privacy, fifty-two, seventy pledge of allegiance and flag displays, fifty-two, thirty-five conduct on school buses, fifty-two, twenty-five management planning guidelines for students with food allergies and/or glycogen storage disease, fifty-three, forty physical examinations and screenings. Fifty through, fifty-three, twenty health services requirements and fifty-three, thirty health records. I will turn it over to Ms. Sion and Mrs. Aquan.
So I didn't receive any questions, um, after the last review of these, so unless there are questions, I'd move that we approve these policies and we continue with the audit.
Thank you, Mrs. Aquan, thank you, Mrs. Sion, a lot of work goes on behind the scenes around this, so thank you, board questions or comments? All right, may I have a motion to approve board policy changes as recommended by the board policy committee and as discussed and reviewed at the June fourteenth Board of Education meeting?
So I moved, I think we just need a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Aquan, second by Mr. Senior, uh, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Uh, Dr. Adley, first reading and discussion on proposed schedule of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three regular Board of Education meetings and subcommittee meetings.
Yes, they are, as, uh, you see them presented, just probably just point out that there's only one meeting, given the vacation proposed. Uh, there's only one meeting in April, but other than that, um, the board certainly can look at those. Tried to keep the same sort of format for the, for the various committees to meet at this particular point. If you feel, if you feel that that is, is working on for the various days and times, uh, we'll, we'll just keep those and we'll move forward. That's the first read.
All right, so that is just a first reading on the proposed schedule of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-three, where your Board of Education, so can you, questions, comments?
Question about the timing of the subcommittee meeting, for those people that go into city, is that, is eight-thirty work, is, is eight, better? I'm just curious if it is.
I would, I would prefer earlier, but.
Me too.
But then it's the staff, but is that too early to have, to have those that are running the meetings?
Certainly, for, for reasonable, reasonableness, certainly not before eight o'clock.
Right.
Okay, well, but is eight too early for those that might have to travel further? Okay, all right, then that's fine.
That's the answer, that's fine, thank you.
Thanks for being gay.
Yep.
I was gonna say seven-thirty. Get you out of bus drop off.
They used to begin at eight.
Yeah. Okay, good.
But any later than eight-thirty gets really tight.
Yeah.
All right, so that will come back, um, for action. Update on board master agenda, February through August twenty-twenty-two, Dr. Adley?
Well, again, this is this is updated, I've tried to reflect some of the changes that you can see.
Is, is this going to be adopted before our retreat or? I forgot the timing of this.
No, the next, no.
Okay.
It wouldn't be, no.
We might have comments after the retreat.
Yeah.
Well, you may also have comments after you have a chance to.
Any initial comments or thoughts? Yes.
I'd love to respond to the public comment this evening by Mrs. Stacy Tey. I have no interest in adding open choice to the agenda until we have the study on the, on the student population. It also referred to her and I'll send her the slide that the superintendent provided to the Board of Finance, which talks about student enrollment growing, so uh, I've been pretty, um, consistent on my view that until we get a better view on student enrollment falling, then I'm not interested in, uh, in addressing open choice for the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. Mrs. Parent.
Uh, I'd be interested in, and I know that you, we've been adding these to the agenda anyways, but the, the mental health updates and especially for the August twenty-third and, and what if anything, looks different, um, for the upcoming school year.
I like that on the mental health side of it, yep. Yes, sorry, Mrs. Aquan.
Um, I would just request that we revert back to, um, the process of hearing major budget initiatives prior to the budget coming out. So, you know, I don't know even if we back that process up so that we can make sure we have presentations in time for the budget. But it's, it's
Becomes tight.
Too rushed in January when we're also trying to do, do a lot, so if there's major budget initiatives, if we could have them rolled out in the fall again, that would be nice.
I think the, the discussion at the budget should be about the dollars and cents and beforehand, we should be having the discussion around what it is you're trying to accomplish, you know, from an educational standpoint, so then it just becomes more of a discussion around the dollars. Good, Mr. Brown.
Just one other point, and it may not fall in this timeframe, but going forward, at some point, I'd be curious to revisit policy ninety-two, eighty. We've had a little bit of time to run with this, uh, see what value comes in, we used to evaluate if we're, if we're getting much out of it and whether we should continue that policy.
I dream about.
That would be the title. Uh, student representatives of the Board of Education.
Probably have an opportunity, uh, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brian, to do that at the retreat.
Perfect, yep, perfect, good. Um, just to follow up on Mr. Senior's comment, I, I guess, and maybe Dr. Adley, I'm gonna shed a light on this. I mean, I think this is a pretty standard agenda and I think, while we can always add to the agenda, I, I would I think we would see open choices coming as part of your plan for next year before we would add it to an agenda item. You haven't brought anything to the board, um, as a follow-up yet, but I would wait to see what comes from the administration. You know?
Yeah.
I think that's kind of a, a normal process that we go through, if that makes sense.
The only other thing we could do here, too, uh, maybe part of the retreat is, are there processes here that you would like to fall off the board agenda? Just that we do as, like, potentially as a standard item, is, does it have does it maintain its relevance and important charges of that?
If, if you have any ideas, that would be great, too.
I mean, yeah, I think.
Okay, good, please share that.
Good.
Well, just, just to add one point there, and I'll use open choice as an example because it came up tonight. I think that, just like we talked about board goals, being a hybrid of district goals and what the board wants. If there are things we said we'd revisit, right, at one point, we said we were going to revisit transportation after having a full year to be able to study. It came up about revisiting open choice, like the board should, prior to budget season, really decide what they're going to revisit and whatnot, so that it, like, just like the superintendent presentation, the board doesn't get in a spin over things, they should put kind of their stamp on things, is this happening or is this not happening? Um, so I think it could come from both spots, but I think it'd be better to be clear about programmatic initiatives prior to budget season. And that worked well in the past, and I think we'd be well served to do that again.
Thank you, great. Mrs. McCammon.
The other piece I think we could look at is, is our agenda review process, so for example, this is February through August of twenty-two, which means next month. So, you know, it's probably not the most useful agenda item at the stage to just look at next month's meeting. So maybe we want to just take a look at how we, the points at which we look at the agenda and, and, uh, what those actual pieces are, you probably could go further out, for example. In August and not worry about it at this meeting.
Yep. Okay. Good. All right, we'll move on to action items, personnel items, appointments, resignations and retirements, Mrs. Sion.
As you can see, the hiring season seems to be earlier this year, I think that people are filling positions that went unfilled last year and so consequently, we have some, um, openings and so far, um, we've been able to fill except that, as Dr. Abby pointed out, with some of the support services which have been a little bit more difficult, they are shortage areas.
How's the, the flow of resumes and applicants?
We're still getting, well, again, not for every position, but some of those shortage areas, the psychologists, the speech and language pathologists. We're being aggressive with, um, the preparatory institutions and advertising in New York State, and they're interviewing all the time, so.
Okay, questions or comments on the PAR? Have a motion to approve the personal items as detailed in the personal action report dated June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? Great. We will move on to the contract agreement between the Darian Board of Education and the Darian School Custodians, um, Union, Miss Sion. Yep.
So we're asking the board to approve the contracts for both the custodians and maintenance workers. We have really good working relationships with both of these groups, they work hard. I think that, like in all negotiations, there was a little bit of joy and a little bit of unhappiness on both sides, I don't know the specificity, and we discussed some of the provisions in executive session.
Good. So just at a high level, a summary of the custodian and maintenance negotiations, the contract term is for three years. The GWI is two and a half percent per year. Um, the new salary schedule will go into effect for employees hired after seven, one, twenty-two. There will be, uh, potential savings of between fifteen and twenty-three thousand, uh, per position when transitioned to a new salary schedule. Um, the maintenance savings will be between sixteen and thirty-five, um, per position when transitioned to a new salary schedule. Um, the custodian cost, um, is five point oh-two over three years or an average of one-six-seven per year. Um, maintenance is a savings of about four point one-five percent over three years, an average savings of about one-three-eight per year. So, I know Marge and Rich have been working on this a long time, so thank you to both the custodian and the maintenance teams for all the hard work they do and for, uh, working with us at the table, and thank you, Marge and Rich for that. Questions or comments? All right, may I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Darian Board of Education and the Darian School Custodians Union? Mrs. Parent, second by Mrs. McCammon, all those in favor? That is unanimous, may I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between Darian Board of Education and the Darian School Maintenance Association? Mrs. Aquan, uh, second by Mr. Brown, all those in favor? All right. Michelle, we will go back to public comment. Anyone in the audience?
For participants via Zoom, please click the raised hand option, uh, please state your name and address, you will have up to three minutes. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone, again, please enjoy the summer, we'll be working throughout the summer along with the administration and the district, but thank you again, have a good summer, may I have a motion to adjourn, Mrs. Best, second by Mrs. Aquan, all those in favor?